Twenty-fifth meeting, Christiansburg Town Council for all. And as we always do, we will take a moment of reflection to think about those that are less fortunate than us, those that are having troubles around the world, or members of your family, whatever. So let's take a moment of reflection. Thank you. If you'll stand and join us in the plaid, it would be nice. Council Lady, join me if you may. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the banner for which it stands, on the nation under guard, in the business with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Before we go into public hearings, I'd like to make a unannounced presentation. Randy? You're up here. Some of you may not know, but yesterday was Randy's twenty-fifth anniversary with the town. So Randy, twenty-fifth anniversary of ten. And this is a brief letter. Thank you for twenty-five years of service to the town of Christiansburg. Your many years of service are a true testimony of your dedication to the town of Christiansburg, your value, and your value to your competition. Dedicated and always liked you, a foundation of any successful organization. Thank you again for your hard work and devotion, and please accept my good wishes on this twenty-fifth anniversary of your involvement at Christiansburg. Senator, my.
Good point.
I can still beat that place. This is the public hearing portion of the town council meeting. We will open the public hearing for the proposed grant of naming rights, Christiansburg-Huckleberry Park. Is there anyone here to address this matter? Hearing none. Anyone that would like to present a bid? We have a bid from Sheila Motor Mile for naming rights for Huckleberry Park, Christiansburg-Huckleberry Park. Are there any other bids that anyone would like to submit for this? Hearing none. Being no further bids, this bidding is now closed. Town staff, we have not had to review this, so at this point, I'm not sure if you would have any recommendations. It is scheduled to discuss later in the council comments. And thank you. Will you summarize the field?
Yes.
This is the first time anybody from the town has seen that, I guess.
Yep. Just you saw me. We have a naming rights agreement from, I think it's going to be the Motor Mile, Sheila Motor Mile, and the Sheila Group. We got a $500,000.
Can we verify when we say the naming rights, what we're talking about?
Yeah.
What are anything in the parks?
Correct. The park is Christiansburg-Huckleberry Park, although this would, I guess, allow opportunity for sponsorship, and it would be something, if possibly Sheila, Christiansburg-Huckleberry Park, Christiansburg-Huckleberry Park sponsored by Sheila Motor Mile, that would have to be something that would have to be worked out between us and the sponsorship if it's accepted.
It's actually IMC, so we'll get to it, right?
Yes.
So it's IMC in our agenda?
Yeah, we'll get to it. All right. We have a vacation of unbuilt rights of royal angle drive southwest, from West Main Street to First Street southwest, on First Street southwest, from angle drive southwest to Christmas Street southwest, is a remnant piece of broadway located off an unbuilt portion of First Street southwest. Is there anyone here to address this? Yes, sir. You'll come to the podium, give us your name, and your address.
Darius Slaughter, 101 Christmas Street. All we got was a letter in the mail telling us about the meeting. We don't know anything about the vacation rights, so can someone explain it to us?
Sir, Randy, do you have a map?
Right now, basically what you see in the shaded area is unbuilt town public street. What is being proposed is the town to vacate our interest in it as a street, so we would effectively give that up as town property for future street construction is really why it's there. If we do that, then what typically happens is it's divided by the middle and given to adjoining property.
What is proposed for the other property that was bought? Because I've been here several years ago trying to get them to at least cut the grass over there, and would nobody do it?
They are proposing to, and I guess this is kind of an unrelated issue, but they are proposing to subdivide that property and build townhouses basically on the grass area at the rear of the units.
That would cut off my access to my yard, should they get that property.
To the rear of your yard?
Yes.
Would you have access around your home?
No.
You might speak to the developer about the possibility of allowing access through there. It's possible that they, well, I guess one thing, it's possible a portion of that property could be dedicated to you through this. It's also possible that the developer could give you an access easement through any portion that's dedicated to them.
Okay, that's for me. What about the other property owner?
It would be a similar situation.
So you know how wide that street, that street is?
I think it's about three. It's not.
So the gentleman and the other property owner would get approximately fifteen feet off of that property, so you could, that would be your property, so you would have access.
You did a utility pole in the middle of it.
Well, there you go. What do you think about that side of it? But.
If this not go to the planning commission?
The street vacation that hasn't been to the planning commission, the rezoning of the property would go to the planning commission. We can have staff look into the issue and speak to the developer about the issue for access to the rear yard.
We will not make a decision on this tonight. Once the public hearing is held and comments are noted, then it will go through planning, no, it will come back to us in two weeks after we've had a chance to talk to everyone involved with it.
I kind of feel like this needs to go back to planning commission, but that may just be me. Sir, can you please provide the information to Randy Winfield before you leave today, so he can be able to contact you?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Just want to make sure the vacation of town property does not get a planning commission.
Correct, correct.
That's good. What should we ask him, please, to address?
101 Christmas Street.
101 Christmas. And your name?
Darius Slaughter.
Slaughter. Okay.
When is, when are the plans for the zoning and stuff like that going to the planning commission?
There's not a scheduled zoning. I'm not sure if it would be zoning today's current zoning to R three one.
Sorry, sorry about that.
So what exactly are you going to do on Mr. Slaughter's behalf?
Speak to the, I guess, proposed developer in regards to potential for relocating the pole and/or giving an access easement if it's needed.
The access was, that was the first thing you said, that was important, right?
Yes. I mean, I even looked at doing, going through the front, but it's where it's so steep, I can't get up the hill.
They do plan on basically paving that area as an entrance, or at least using a portion of that area as an entrance, under their development plan.
Does it have to move that pole anyway?
Well, I think they'd be basically right beside the pole, under their development plan. Like I say, I guess they'd be on their portion of the property, so.
Would you, will you be able, prior to this next meeting, will you be able to let us know the development as far as the granting of an easement, and how easy that would be?
Yes.
You know, the other thing that we can do is we can, to which we can deny the request.
You can, you can table additionally if you like. We likely have it on street committee agenda, so.
Okay. But we don't have to approve it there either?
That's correct.
That's correct.
We can just leave it as a proposed street?
Again, I've been here years ago trying to get it passable, just gravel or something. It was turned down, and I asked about it, is somebody going to come by, cut the grass? No. I mean, I've actually let it go for a while to see if somebody would come through. Nobody's ever came through. I've been there since ninety-eight, and the town hasn't cut that grass once.
Sir, which one is your house up on the mountain? No one?
Yep.
Well, I'm sure, I'm speaking for myself, but I am really glad that you're here tonight, and I'm sorry you feel like you didn't get enough notice, but you did the right thing for coming over here tonight.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else to address this? Hearing none, we will close this section of this portion of the public hearing. We have a rezoning request by Jerry L. Beasley for LR, for Lino Beasley, property owners to rezone an approximately point oh, point oh eight, oh two acre portion of the property located at twenty-four seventy-five Glade Drive Southeast, tax parcel five thirty, dash eight, dash six, parcel ID is oh two seven, two three eight, from A agriculture to R one single-family residential. Property is designated residential in the future land use map, two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan.
Hello. I'm Jerry Beasley, Christiansburg High School, class of nineteen sixty-nine.
The order you leave. Your address? I need your address.
Twenty-four seventy-five Glade Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it was nineteen eighty-six or nineteen eighty-seven, I bought an additional parcel of land behind my property from Mr. Teal, with the intent of eventually putting a home on it. I'd hoped that one day, maybe I would have a son that would come back and live there. My son is planning to live there. He'll bring with him my four-year-old grandson. I'll get to see him every day. I'm requesting that this be changed from agriculture, which it is now, to residential.
Any questions?
All right. Do you vote on that now, or do I need to wait?
No. Any public hearing, the first hearing of it, we will not make a decision in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Close the public hearing, other consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the monthly bill list, a resolution recognizing May seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, as National Tour, National Travel and Tourism Week, resolution recognizing May sixth through the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, as National Mercers Week. We have a contract renewal number two with Wetland Studies and Solutions, DBA WSSI for Stormwater Engineering and On Call Services, in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per task, with work completed per contract year not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Contract renewal number two with Rommel, Clepper, and Cale, LLP, DBA, RK, and K for Signal Structure Evaluations and Traffic Engineering On Call Services, in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per task order, with a work order completed per contract year not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. We have a task order with, again, Rommel, Clepper, and Conk for design of the East Main Street Sidewalk Project, in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Make a motion that we approve the items under the consent agenda, items A and G.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question about line item.
Can I get a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
All right, thank you.
Typically, people jump in before I start.
I know. I try not to do that. So real quick, it's on page ten, it's the first vendor item on there, it's a beginning of tourism authority, welcome center, single packet, pocket brochure, two hundred and forty dollars. And Brad, I think you, the rec commission got a tour, a grant through the tourism commission as well. I was just curious on that, is that expenditure, but is it that the Virginia Tourism is paying some of this through a grant to, directly to the aquatic center? Is that how it works?
Basically, the ones that we got, the tourism grant that we received was for special event, and so basically, it was a certain amount that we were given, and then we had to match that amount.
So, it's the same thing, that your department reached out on your own to get that grant? And I believe Terry did.
I'm pretty sure it's the same.
Okay. Just solely for the department? There was no other third party involved in achieving this grant?
No.
Is Terry back there? I can't see you back there. The same thing, sorry, Terry.
Same thing with us, we reached out to the tourism for the distribution of the rack cards at the on by on.
Apologies, I didn't have my glasses on. I was looking for you earlier.
Any other questions? No, sir. Madam Clark?
Councilwoman Vicious. Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
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 Aye. This is six oh on the consent agenda. We have no introductions or presentations tonight. We will move into the citizens' comments portion of the meeting, in which you're starting to welcome to come to the podium, your name and address, and address any concerns to me as the chair. Is there anyone here that would like to address?
Good evening, I'm Carrie Bradshaw, live at four seven five Summit Ridge Road. I really appreciate the opportunity for a public address, and I just am coming to talk a little bit about our school resource officer that we have at Falling Branch Elementary School. I'm the administrative assistant there, I've been there for a number of years, and I just want to speak in favor of supporting our town officers as SROs in our town schools. Our police officers have always had the highest professionalism. Our hats are off to the Christiansburg Police Department, they've done a fantastic job. Our officers in the town routinely come through to help with, they come to do walkthroughs, they do lockdown drills with us, they show our students the K nine operation, they monitor traffic coming off of the interstate. Our school, Falling Branch in particular, is in a very interesting location with it being right there on an interstate, so our officers are frequently there before school and after school, monitoring traffic. This is just a town-wide officer thing, we have our own resource officer, of course, but our department as a whole has really done a great job building trust, watching out for us, being there at a moment's notice. So we have really come to deeply appreciate not just the town officers, but our resource officer, Adam Horn. We share Officer Horn with CES and CPS, and he manages three schools, sometimes even covering at the middle school and high school, and he does it well. He does an excellent job teaching there, building relationships with students, his, he just has a very even and steady demeanor and presence in our school. Officer Horn's professionalism provides a very positive element in our school, and we would be very, very sad to lose him. He is ready at all times to offer support, and if needed, direction in the many activities our, that occur in our school and in the daily lives of the students and faculty in three schools. He's ready to check on anything and everything, he's ready to be present in emotionally intense conversations. And when I say as a very steady manner, it's never anything intrusive, it's always just, you know, I'm here and I'm supporting you, and it's exactly, exactly what we need in our schools. So all of this, also teaching the dare curriculum to multiple grade levels in multiple schools. He's built strong relationships with our students, and that is exactly what our, I feel like our police department and our community has wanted over the last several years, as politically things haven't gone well for our law enforcement. And the work, the daily work, not just popping in every now and then, but the daily work of being in our school, has built great relationships. The students are eager to share life experiences with Officer Horn. He was at our school today, just walking through the cafeteria, engaging with students, and I'm sure he does that at the other schools as well. So I just want you to know, that our school, and I'm a little late to the discussion, I know this has been on your agendas for a little while, and I really felt like I would be remiss if I didn't say how important the relationship has been to us at Falling Branch. And so we value our relationship with the Town of Christiansburg Police Department. As a citizen of this town that I love, I really believe that it is the primary function of our local town government to provide the safety and security to the students that live here in our town. Our police department has exemplified this responsibility. I know it's expensive, but I do think there are priorities that have to be maybe even adjusted, even though that's difficult to balance everything, but I know when you say the lives of our students and their safety are your highest priority, you know, I think there has to be a little bit of wiggle room there. So I hope that you will consider restoring funding to the Christiansburg Police Department to continue to provide our SROs for our town schools. If you say that our children of their highest, are of the highest value, I do fail to see how your, how voting against that can, can show that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Almost I heard today, I was.
Well, I'm Dustin Robbins, I live at seventeen twenty Old Farm Village Road here in Christiansburg, apartment twenty-two. I'm mainly here to just bring up a general issue, nothing that can be fixed right now, it's a very long-term issue that needs to be, starting to be addressed, because it's becoming a major issue since COVID, and that is just general housing. I've recently been looking for an apartment because I'm about to be evicted from my current one, for just a whole slew of reasons, because I have a lot of issues with community housing partners as being just a bad landlord in general. But there's also other bad landlords that are charging outrageous amounts, including, I want to say it's called Great Communities, Inc., which owns most of the trailer parks and a lot of rental houses in this area, especially in Christiansburg. Their minimum deposit is four thousand dollars, with a town that's at seventy percent poverty in twenty nineteen, and has greatly increased since, I haven't seen the latest numbers for twenty twenty-two yet, because I don't think they've been published, but I know last year it was closer to eighty. And it's just ridiculous. The only way to really fix this is to bring in affordable housing, talk with developers, help them to understand that we can't as residents afford rentals in this town anymore. We cater to mostly Blacksburg. We think because Blacksburg students can afford it, that our residents can afford it, and that's just not the case. So basically, what I'm saying is I'd like to meet with each of you individually, or as a couple, as a group, within the law of not having to make it a public meeting, and discuss how we can bring in developers, because I've seen how Blacksburg's doing it, and they're, they're working very slowly, and they've almost had a ten-year project that's starting to come to fruition now. But it's a long-term project that needs to be started now, because our residents simply can't afford it, and I'm seeing more and more homeless people come to this town every day. Some that's lived here for most of their lives, some are coming from Roanoke now, because Roanoke has absolutely no housing whatsoever. What they do have is the mission and rundown housing that's abandoned and just not livable in. So they come here thinking, we have it. This used to be a small problem, now it's a massive problem with people coming into the town. We've had problems with this before, with people soliciting on the side of the street with signs, people giving money, which they had town addressed, what, maybe two, three years ago? And that was great in some ways and bad in others, but it's becoming a bigger issue, and those new residents aren't going to know those laws that we've put into place here. In order to fix that, we need to bring in more affordable housing. It's a difficult conversation to convince a very rich company to not charge their normal rates for newly built housing, as construction costs continue to go up, but it's something that needs to just be discussed, probably budgeted a little bit, try to subsidize new construction over time, and not, like with the new budgets you're probably discussing now, but in future budgets to consider, to help bring in affordable housing, because I know I'm going to be homeless in two months. There's just no question about it, I'm going to be living outside in two months. I can't fix it, the cheapest place I found was four thousand dollars, and they said I could not live there, because I don't make enough money. They want you to make three times that just to move in. That's twelve thousand dollars a month, times twelve months. It's over a hundred thousand dollars. We can't do that in this town. Nobody can. The cheapest place I found was seven hundred dollars a month, it was being rented out by Ms. Marie Marsh, which everybody knows is a politician locally. It was the size of a prison cell. She wanted seven hundred dollars down, plus the first month's rent, plus the prorated rent. At the time I applied, it was twenty-four hundred dollars total, because it was the beginning of the month. Or sorry, not, eighteen hundred dollars total, not twenty-four hundred, that's too much. My math was off there for a second. But that's still a lot, two thousand, nearly two thousand dollars for a prison cell room that was so just disgusting, you could smell the drugs.
I get where you're coming from, trying to do a little less of the narrative at this point, Dustin.
So, I'm sorry, well, I'm just trying to encourage, like, please just, after this meeting, can we schedule meetings with each of you individually, even Mr. Ringfield or the assistant town manager, to discuss how we can move forward this, because I know how we could move forward with this, but you guys might not know. And I would love to just start an open discussion with you, to try to bring affordable housing in, so less people are homeless going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I would be remiss if I did not recognize, Ms. Bradshaw is the daughter of our former longtime councilman, Wayne Booth. If there's no one else to address citizens' comments, I will close this portion of the meeting. Committee reports, do we have any? Street invite, emergencies?
It's not on the agenda, should I share that now, or at council reports?
It is a committee, is it on, it's on the agenda?
You could do it under either.
Yeah, it's fine.
It's fine.
I'm sorry.
Under either's fine.
Okay, then I will share an update from the Emergency Services Committee. Last night, we met with Chief Hanks.
Oh, lady, go out and run home.
Last night, we met with Chief Hanks, and he brought to us some information about the revenue recovery for the fire department, and, and we discussed, actually, Council Wilson has currently brought a copy of this. There's a company called Fire Recovery under Fire Billing Solutions, and they ran some numbers based on previous year's calls, and shared with us that they could recover based on some prior numbers, about a hundred and two thousand dollars for the fire department. So Emergency Services Committee gave him some guidance and direction, and we told him we were in support of this, and asked him to begin doing this immediately.
Anything else to add?
No. That's good.
I just like kind of thought the report that Chief Hanks or his staff sent us about, you know, the quarterly reports, we used to get those every month. I think we're getting.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. But 37% of the fire response was for county residences from town services, and rescue was over 20% to county. Am I right on that?
So, these numbers here only are the fire, not rescue. So, the 100,000 is just the, based off fire calls, not the rescue calls?
But there was a rescue one on there too, wasn't there?
Yeah, but that's, that's a different issue. So, we didn't, we didn't address that last night. All we addressed was the fire.
I just wanted to point it out.
Yeah.
So, whenever you, you hear that, you know, the town just doesn't answer its own calls, they're being more and more pulled outside of the town limits.
That's correct.
For services because our, the county can't, can't meet the need at this point, or at least 30% is a lot for fire, so.
Very good. That's it for me. Any other committee reports?
I was just going to say that the agency on aging has a lot of programs online that you can take for caregivers, for financial stability, and how to take care and where for the long-term care that their agency on aging does. And then, there was also, they wanted to tell us also about, there is all these events about the café. They meet on Thursdays at the Red Center. Maybe Brad, but he can help me a little bit with that one. They meet on Thursdays, so what time was that again? I had it right.
Nobody cares? Is it on fire?
No, the café for the older people at the Red Center, that is on Thursdays. What time was it, from what time to what time?
I, I actually don't remember what back.
Well, they, they are taking up, yes, too. Because they got a new person in there too, so.
Yeah, generally during the morning hours.
Very good. Anything else? We'll move on to discussion and action by Mayor and Council. We have a request by Downtown Christiansburg, Inc. for street closures of West Main Street, from Franklin Street to Dunkley Street, and Hickok Street from First Street to Commerce Street on Saturday, May 6th, from 12 to noon, 12 noon to 11:00 p.m. for the DCI Food Truck Rodeo. We did meet this morning. I will say that there were some documents that we needed, and I think they're on pretty good chance of getting those done. Chris?
Yes, sir. Hey, good evening. Chris Chittenden, board member for Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated, co-chair with Ellie Travis of the Food Truck Rodeo. Do we want to address the request for road closure first, or how do you want to handle that? I mean, that's a agenda item.
Well, my suggestion is that we would approve this, a temporary approval subject to completion of documentation.
Gotcha.
And that documentation needs to be in Thursday, 5:00. Is that correct?
That is what you said, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, so this was the same route that was approved in August for last October's Food Truck Rodeo, which was canceled due to Hurricane Ian. So, from West Main, from Franklin, as you read, to Dunkley and Hickok, from First to Commerce for Saturday, March, May 6th, from noon to 11:00. It is a 10-year Food Truck Rodeo. According to police estimates, we have close to 10,000 people come. It's a really big and successful event that brings, highlights the wonderful town of Christiansburg. We have nine small businesses who will be spotlighted in our small business section. We have 15 food truck vendors, and Paint and Fun Ceramics is hosting the children's center, the children's area, well, they'll do some crafts and paints and things like that there. We have 15 trucks currently. We have Ironheart Winery, some beers from Blue Ridge Beverage. I'm just checking in with my words. And JH Bard's is serving and selling bourbon this year. So, we're really excited about the event. We're praying for weather to be good. Last year, you know, it was the first one since COVID, and then it got pushed off, so we're sort of like hoping for that. As far as the items that were addressed, sent to us today, all have been completed. An email was sent, and we are just anticipating proper certifications from our food trucks. I will say Ellie dug in a little bit today. There's a couple items that are outstanding and may not be achievable with the 24th because as trucks expire at the end of the month, they can't get re-inspected till after they're expired, which would be after the 1st. And these are, these are responsible, you know, well-known trucks in the area. So, I'm not sure how we can address that to make sure it still gets completed. Without them, we still have 11 trucks, which we can do, that's what we had in the fall. So, we can do the rodeo with the 11. Our hope is that we can get the approval for the others that have outstanding paperwork, which is mostly expired items, so.
I would think that I would suggest you work with Rachel and Chief Hanks.
Okay.
On those. And I did see your email, and I believe Billy saw your email about those that were coming up, and that certainly understands.
Yeah, trying to, and one that was supposed to, I think that a death in the family, they're getting them on the 1st also because they are out of town until such because of family events.
I think the question is to close the streets.
Correct.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the request by Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated for the street closure of West Main Street on Saturday, May 6th, from 12 to 11:00 p.m. for the DCI Food Truck.
A second.
A motion in a second. Any other questions, comments?
Where, where, where does this, where do we fall on proper table?
If, if any. That is one thing we need to make sure that we get on.
I heard Mike say Thursday morning, I heard Thursday.
If it's, if it's simply a matter of one, one or two food trucks that don't have the documentation, we wouldn't allow them to set up if they don't have it.
Correct.
And I guess we just had to do a little bit of communication because we actually have more than just a couple food trucks that we have that haven't got all.
Some of those aren't coming, which we hadn't communicated with you, which is our miss, for sure, and we own that. But yeah, so we do have 11 that do have it. So, the, the 11 that are listed is actually, there's 10 listed. It was said that there was 11, but there's 10. And.
But bottom line.
Several aren't coming, several of those aren't coming. So, that was, was not noted in the file that you have access to. And several are the ones that are missing. And the fact is that the 11 that we do have everything for, we have everything for. So, if we don't get the others, we will nix them. But we would love the grace to be able to let them, get them re-approved by May 1st and not have to push for the 24th because that's just not possible for those trucks. And they've paid, and they're excited, I'm sorry, the 27th Thursday. So, we could communicate that through email. I'm happy to do that. We're on it, and we'll do what we can. So, whatever Brad needs.
The biggest thing is, is just that communication.
Yeah.
So, we make sure, because I want to make sure we, you all have the same list we have.
Right.
That we're not seeing.
Yep.
And the other aspect of it is just the safety aspect of the.
Hundred percent.
Large event, there could be a lot of liability that takes place, so we have to make sure that all of those items are filled.
Understood.
That it has a successful.
And that's what we want to, for sure, for sure. So, we can get together. I reached out to Rachel today by phone call, did not hear back from her. We've been communicating with email, but we would be happy to get it all squared away. Yeah, sure.
Can, can you meet the condition by the Thursday?
So, there are, so if, if we, there's, there's five food trucks for which we're missing pieces of documentation. Three of them have participated with the Christiansburg Farmers Market, and they've set up. The two other ones, there's been a death in the family, and they're getting their truck inspected on May 3rd. So, if those five, if something happens, they don't get their documentation in, we will still have Food Truck Rodeo. Right. Because we have 11 trucks, we have three bands, we have beer, we have wine, we have 10,000 people coming, we have 50 volunteers signed up. So, Food Truck Rodeo will happen. I acknowledge that there's been a miss of communication and that's something I would really love to work on next year, to work collaboratively on Food Truck Rodeo. So, this doesn't, doesn't happen in the nth hour. I, I hundred percent believe that that's something we should do this collaboratively. But regardless, if these five trucks get their documentation in or not, I really think they will. It's just a matter of the timing. We will have 11 trucks, and we will have Food Truck Rodeo. So, really, the documentation that's missing is just related to those five food trucks. All the other documentation, the ABC, the insurance, everything is already there.
I am grateful that you guys got 10 trucks.
Do we have a second?
Eleven.
There was a second, sorry. It's out open for discussion.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, we had a second.
Okay, Casey, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, John.
And I appreciate the fact that you found 10.
Eleven.
And that's a lot, or 11.
Fifteen, actually, but yeah.
Obviously, you know, you did, you did do a lot of work already. I have seen stuff online and everything else, and obviously, these, you guys don't put up a show like this, it's hard. So, that's really good that you guys are doing that for our community, and your job is appreciated. If there is anything that, you know, Randy can do, or Raoul, or anybody, I'm sure that.
They just have to take care of what they.
Yep.
There's a reason why we have an application process.
Sure.
And this is the last part of the application process. I think it's rare, I've never known any event to come to council with this type of back and forth about the event. Usually, this is our final process to close the streets. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
When we have an event, right?
The motion that we have is for the truck rodeo, and they have trucks coming. So, I don't think there should be a discussion what they can fix those details behind tomorrow or whatever. And I think.
This is for the events application, that's right? Closure of the street.
Like I say, even if you approve the street, street closure, we can turn away any, any non-accomplished trucks.
That's right, that's the plan. If anyone shows up that doesn't have the documents, we will not let them into Truck Rodeo. We're committed to a safe event, just like you all are.
So, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Court?
Councilwoman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Davis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Aye.
Six, eight.
Thank you.
Ladies, good luck.
Yeah.
Appointment of, the appointment of Beth Umberger to the Sustainability Committee. Beth is here tonight, busily knitting a new plant, I think.
I'll make a motion that we appoint her to the Bike Way, Walkway Committee.
Sustainability.
Sustainability Committee, sorry.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second.
It's already on, it's already.
Any other comments or questions?
Throw it off, bye. That's it.
Madam Court?
Councilwoman Bishop?
Councilwoman Davis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Aye.
Yeah, just six, eight. Thank you. Congratulations, Beth.
Beth, I think you'll serve on that as well.
Whatever, we got you. Next is a discussion, Christiansburg Diamond Sponsorship Naming Rights, which I announced earlier. Six, 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 these things are just done before 7:00 p.m., and that's one I hope. Now, I think that there is quite a document here. There may be some information that's still needed. My suggestion is that we, if you would like to approve this request, you can do so subject to town negotiations between the town manager and the presenter. We haven't seen the entire gist of it yet. Or we can delay approval until it's been read and properly vetted. That's up to council.
Aye. I'll take a stab at it. I, I say we approve the proposal as we've heard the basics, provided that after legal review, that everything is, is, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted.
Got a motion. Do you have a second?
Motion to approve.
Hearing no second, that motion would die. So.
I would like to.
I'll make a motion that we table it until the next meeting for legal to review it, staff to review it, and then we can have it on the next agenda for both.
I do want to say that.
You've got to get a second to that.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Now, discussion, Ms. Hicks.
I am really grateful that we got this. So, thank you, Kevin. Please tell children, or my old family, and everybody over there, thank you for that. We're looking forward to seeing what's inside, so, thank you.
Very good. So, with that, I will hand this to the town manager at the end of the meeting, and you all proceed as necessary. Thank you, Kevin. Next on the agenda is the process for the appointment of the police chief.
Did you vote to table?
We did. Would you, would you, public counsel?
Councilwoman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Davis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Aye.
That's six, eight. It's going to be even older. Okay, now, it's, next is the process for appointment of the police chief. I'm not sure who, which one of us put this on the agenda, Randy put it on there. We have in the past, this, first of all, this position has not been advertised. We will advertise it to an extent. We have over the, over the last, I guess, about nine years as mayor and probably a couple of years on the council, we have gone out to a headhunter group or groups to make a nationwide search and spent probably $80,000 or better and ended up three out of four times hired from within. So, I'm not a big proponent of trying to get a, a personnel firm involved in this. I think we can properly advertise it. I've already talked to the HR Director and got the parameters of how and when we can advertise it. But I think that, I, I think I would like to consider, from a lot of standpoints, to get your thoughts on possibly hiring, filling this job from within. Mark has been a police chief for 15 years. He has created quite a, quite a facility, quite an operation, quite a, quite a department. And I think during that time, Mark, you've also brought some people along, training them for this stuff. Is that true?
That's correct.
So, that's kind of what I'm thinking about. I'm wanting to hear from the rest of it.
One thing I guess I'll, I'll kind of let you know is, of course, this discussion, as far as the processes and advertisement, has to be a public discussion. If you want to have discussion of any specific candidates, you can do that as a closed meeting, if you like, and I can add that to a future agenda, if you would like. But, you know, right now, I guess what I'm trying to establish is what, what processes do you want to use as far as advertising? Do you want to use a headhunter firm? How long do you want to advertise? Do you want to form a committee? Or do you want to do interviews with full council? Those type, I guess, items, if you can, any type of direction?
I don't feel we need a head company to do it, but I would like to see us advertise. I'm not saying that we don't have already inside, it's not able to fill this issue, but I like to see what else is available.
Tim, you got it, you want it?
Yeah, no, I, I'm just, I'm pretty much in line with Councilman Bishop. I, I agree, we, we have a great force, chief, and, and odds are in favor that we could find somebody internally. But I don't think it's fair to the general population to not just advertise and see what's out there. But I do think we should form a, a smaller committee to advise, here's what we're, here's the route we're going to the rest of the council. And instead of us having a bunch of meetings with all seven of us to hash things out.
The interview process is whatever we decide on. So, if there is a, a subcommittee to review the applicants, if there is a, after the, after the advertisement and it's closed, it would get the results, look through, if we want to turn a committee to do that. I mean, I think right now, the thing we need to do is advertise. Mark's wanting to retire the 31st of August issue, or December. That, that, that's a bit worse. So, I think that, you know, that's the process we need to get started on now rather than two months down the road.
Henry, you look like the brain's reeling. Looks like.
I was, I was going to wait.
Oh, no, come on.
I put my foot in my mouth enough tonight, I'll wait till then.
Oh, no, no.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
I'm going to wait till you're done. Casey too, and probably same time.
Oh, you are.
I think that this position is very important, and you have done a really good job. I also think that we have really good employees that work for the town that are wonderful police officers. Also, we like to see, you know. I'm sorry.
No, that's my.
That was mine. That's mine.
He gavelled you, and you, you know you've already gone over three minutes. That's true.
But he done that all the time, so.
Kidding, keep going, keep going.
So, um, you see, you're killing my thought.
I'm sorry.
But anyway, it wasn't even you that did it, right? But anyway. Um, but Mark has done a really good job, but then I also think that, you know, all our police officers have done a really good job. I kind of would love to see someone that is already a part of the, the team, and because they know the ins and outs, and I would love to see someone that lives in the town that knows the community, or maybe that knows the community and doesn't even live here, but knows about Christiansburg. I think that I will feel more confident in just hiring a company, even though it would be nice to save the money, but I just don't want people to feel like we are using this as a political thing, or it can be, you know, driven one way or the other.
Mark, you want to let her talk?
Yeah.
Good job. Henry?
No, I'm waiting for Casey.
Yeah, so, um...
Henry, go ahead.
Thank you. So I think, I don't know that we need to hire a firm, I don't know that that's necessary, but I do think it needs to be put out publicly, I do agree with that. Just to make sure we're dotting our Is, crossing our Ts, and making sure that we are looking at the full net and what that looks like. You know, I would, I'd also love to, you know, as chief is on his way out, I would love to see, you know, that advisement of, either on that subcommittee or some degree, helping advise, he certainly knows his staffing guys better than anybody. So having, having him part of that process, I think, would be extremely helpful too, as we work toward August and beyond, so. But I, I don't think we need to go and, and hire a firm for it.
So, agree, I don't think we need to, I don't even think we need to spend the money to go to an outside firm for recruitment. I think it's an interesting concept to form a committee, but I am wondering what questions do you need answered in order to start this process? And if we need to have a work session on that, or if we do need to form a committee to provide that guidance, I think either one of those is fine. I would love to see us hire from within. I don't necessarily feel strongly about posting the position, but I also don't feel against it. I'm fine with that, but I would like to see us hire from within.
Well, we did have to advertise it.
We do have to advertise it? Okay, well then that's not even a discretion, yeah.
We have to put it out.
Okay, so that's that. But as far as like direction that you need tonight, you just want to know, can we advertise? And should we use a recruitment firm?
Let me clarify, I don't think there's ever a question before we're going to advertise, I think we have to advertise.
Or when and how long?
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. And of course Alicia's been out for two days in the conference with her staff, so I've had a lot of chatting with her tomorrow to see.
If you can bring more details from her, and, you know, and the human resource department, that would be really good too.
Would, would you want me to prepare an ad for you to review? Maybe bring it to next council meeting?
That's up to, I think that would be, if, that's up to you and Alicia. Right there. I mean, she's good at it, she does it every day, that's my protocol thing. Henry? I would, I would leave it to suggest we leave it to Alicia to determine how long and to write it. But that's a great thing about going last, you already get to see what the majority wants done, so. I do agree with you, and I've been through both processes, three different times, through a search agency, which costs a town anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand dollars. And, and out of that process, we hired one time outside. But we did go through the advertising. We started that process one time, and that didn't go very well either. So, but I, I think the biggest issue for us, us is setting up a review committee, to where you have three or four candidates at the most, get presented to council. And they have to scrub that list down, or those resumes down, so. And I, you know, the first thing I would say Casey too, is to have Mark on there, but, and I like Mark, but odds are, he's got two or three candidates within his department that he thinks we should hire. And I appreciate that, you, I would definitely use him as an advisory role. But if we could get some other police chief that is willing to dedicate their time to help, and it should be a small committee, two council members. Yeah, I think it is... And, and if we could get a, a chief from like Blacksburg, or... Blackford Drive. Yeah, to help us through that process, those two, and then we can, and I'm not saying we, because I probably won't be on that committee, but that they can present to us maybe five candidates, and we can narrow down three, and then go through the interview process. We didn't do that last time when we were looking for a town manager. We just all looked at every one of them, resumes that came in, and they were pretty interesting. We looked at ten out of those seventy-five. I remember we had eighty or sixty in there. There were some really interesting ones in there. And not to criticize prior, but when we, when we hired Chief Sussin, council at that point appointed seventeen people as an advisory committee. And I would say that, absolutely not. Have to wait a minute. But if it's all right with you, I would like to reach out to the Chief of Blacksburg, and Chief of City Red, and possibly maybe the town manager of Blacksburg, I don't know.
I mean, all that I would suggest, not against anything, against Blacksburg, that chief only has been on the ground for a few months now. So I think, I would like to see a chief with experience.
So it's one in Blacks and Red?
What, what about, what about a retired chief?
We can look at that.
Not a bad idea.
Well, I mean, I do like that idea though, just because inevitably, you know, chief works with those other chiefs, weekly, daily, whatever that looks like, so, I mean, having that perspective, if it is, especially if it's Blacksburg or the county, could be very helpful.
I'd like to go with either a town or city police chief that has more familiar parity with how a town works. Yeah. Because this person is not just the police chief of the officers, it's the whole community. I would like to possibly reach out to Kim Krantz, who was retired police chief in Blacksburg. She's in Crewe, Virginia, but I, I know her fairly well, I think she owes me a couple of favors, I served on some committees for her. So, and then I will, Randy, if it's all right, Randy and I get together, get our heads together with Mark and sit with another one. Maybe Tommy Witt, retired chair. But I would rather, I, I like to stay with the municipality as best I can.
Is there a reason not to just have two councils?
I mean, basically, you're just scrubbing out people who don't qualify. I mean, if they have seven candidates that they feel like should be presented to council for us to reduce down to two or three main ones and have them back. But I would presume the retired police chief and two council members would be enough to scrub that.
I agree with that thought.
And I would like to point... When you make it too big, it's, it's not good. I would like to suggest that we appoint Councilwoman Pocket and Councilwoman Shaw to that committee. So there, you who talks last, just volunteer.
I can think of a couple other qualified, more qualified people.
If you, if you do not want to serve on that committee, let me know, and I will name another person.
Tabby.
You'll do it?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Is that agreeable with council? Is that agreeable with the counties?
Aye. Exactly, you want to, you talking Mike?
Aye. All right, okay.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the, the process of the appointment of the police chief? Hearing no, we'll move on to school resource officers discussion. There's really not a lot of discussion. We have not been presented with anything from the county. I know they discussed this seven days ago, it came up with a plan. They have not reached out to me, I've not reached out to them, so at some point in life, we need to talk. And if you would like for me to meet with them, as we did the first time, and, and just put, put the cards on the table, and find out what they're thinking. I mean, their comment was, well, we can do this and do that, and everybody will save some money. So I'm going to the assumption, that's the town of Christiansburg is going to save some money, and they're going to fund us those three officers, two hundred, three thousand dollars. Now, you know what happens when you assume. Now, I have no question in my mind as whether there will be school resource officers in those three schools when, when the school session starts back. But I think there's some understanding that we need to have with the county. If you're going to do this, then this is what we're going to do, and here's how we're going to do it.
Here's my, my take on it.
Can we just make a motion, we table this until we hear from the, the county on, on what's their proposal?
I'll second it.
I have a question.
Sorry.
Is it possible for us to have a joint meeting with them, and have a discussion with them, us and them? It sounds like Craig is open to having that. I think I have some questions that, if we can discuss as a group, I would like to discuss as a group. I'd like to ask them and have that open discussion.
We have, we have asked them when this first came up. They had no interest in a joint meeting, I will join, I will pose it to them again. I will see the county, the county administrator and the chair of the board in the morning at a meeting, Sam?
They do not want to meet though.
But, but this note here says that they, am I reading, am I misreading this? It sounds like they do. It's a, Craig asked that you pass along a board interest and suggested the possibility of having a joint meeting between the board and council.
The board interest is from the board, the possibility of the meeting is basically Craig and I.
Okay, so it sounds like there's some opportunity there.
I, I think, as, as I understand, I think they would be agreeable if town councils agree.
I would really like that.
I would like that.
I would like that as, I would like to have a public meeting.
Exactly.
I'd like us to have a public meeting and have this discussion, and let our citizens see where everyone's coming from. There's a common interest to protect the schools, but let's have a discussion and see what we can do.
It's been over ten years since this town council has met with the county to discuss any...
No, it hasn't been, no.
It's been a while.
It hasn't been a lot, it hasn't been ten years.
It hasn't been ten years.
That's why I was so...
Well, my, my condition would be, everybody has to be there. Right. There, you know, one person, one of their supervisors said, I don't want to deal with them, I don't want to be there. No. I want all elected officials to be at the, if I'm taking my time to be there to have the discussion. And there's more about some of the, and there should be more items than just the RSO on there. Well, there are. All right, so when we meet, it's going to be, you know, they need to get a moderator, or we need to chip in for a moderator, if that's what we have to, Kevin Bird always comes to mind for me. But it's going to be in a neutral place, and everybody has to be there.
And we've provided them with a list before of issues that we wanted to talk about. You know, when we said before that we wanted to have a discussion with them, they go, provide us a written list, and we'll decide what we want to talk to you about. So, so now they want to talk to us, you know, where's their list of what they want to talk to us about?
I will relay that, and it's, I mean, this whole thing is, is, is really kind of a, it, it, it's kind of a sore subject. Do I expect them to pay? Hell no.
Yeah, I think it's going to be...
Are we going to take care of it?
I think it's going to be a sore subject until we all get in the same room and talk about it, so.
It's going to be a sore subject. We probably need to do that.
It could be, but I think it's worth the discussion. I really want to talk to them.
All right.
I think this is a real situation for everybody. I think, you know, it's not a political thing, it's not going to be a money thing, it's just about doing what's right. And I think we all cared about what's right for all the citizens. I mean, they are accountable for a hundred thousand of the citizens, and it seems like, you know, a quarter of the population are Christian for citizens, you ordered a quarter of Blacksburg, and you only got fifty percent that they are really taking care of. And they have a school war, so that takes care of the school. Obviously, they, we manage the pocket, we need some accountability too from them, and our children needs to be saved.
They will be saved, I assure you. Now, we will go, if it's all right with council, I will address Craig and, and Sheri in the morning at, at the meeting to ask them for dates.
With, with, and make sure they understand with all members.
Okay, so if they say, if to us they know we're not meeting, then we don't meet? Then we just argue it out?
Really, what's the point?
I don't know, I mean, now you tell me, it's, it's a...
How can two, how can two members be uninterested in this, this very important subject?
That's up to them, it's not...
Well, that's a what if that we don't know. You can look forward back next time that two members aren't going to show up and mention their names. So hopefully, Miss, you know, the people who are concerned, including us, will call that board supervisor.
I will, when I get back tomorrow, I will call you all for a specific timeframes, and it will probably be a midweek evening meeting. It will not be on one of our scheduled meetings, or one of their scheduled meetings. We'll have a separate private thing. As far as, as who's on, who's on turf, it doesn't really matter. If we need to be in a neutral site, we can. I don't think, I don't see that, the necessity.
And I don't care if we go to the government center, that, that matters to me, where we meet, it's just that we...
I know that most of the time we met them, I think we met them at the Great Road, when that was open, there. Just it, sort of, I think it puts people more in ease. And, you know, you, you and Mike can go anywhere, I'm sure, but there, I'm sure each one of us would have a different idea of where we would like to meet.
Like I said, it matters not to me, just as long as we can get eye to eye.
Absolutely. Okay, very good.
I'm just, I'm curious though about this agenda item, if, if we're done. Are we going to vote to table it?
I think we just did, we, we had the motions.
Yeah, we got it both, I think.
I understand that, but we had a lot of discussion. So is there any, any other discussion?
One more piece of discussion, with us making a decision to pull the SROs out on June first. I don't want to rush this discussion, but that is coming up quickly, so we can hold that.
Is it July or June?
Well, school's out, school's out in June, late May.
May.
We could, we could technically pull them June one if we don't reach some, but we, but, you know, I, I don't know.
The original, the original motion said July first.
Yeah, that's in our fiscal book.
Right. And, and so even though the students aren't there, there's, there's adults that are there, that the officers also protect. Mark, do they not stay there? The SRO after the students depart?
They're not fully assigned to school during the summer, they're assigned to patrol, just, just about as a patrol.
Okay.
For a month.
Thank you.
Guys, I know this is not part of what we're going back in, well, what about...
Let's start off the same first, and then you can bring up what you want to add.
Is related to them. Will you guys be open to, um, writing a letter to them requesting? I mean, it's very easy, we have the police officers, they are wonderful. I know they are, they are one in six, which I was amazed, is amazing. The more the merrier, for me, you know? But I think the three officers that we have, like you were saying, I mean, they are fabulous, I met them, and they are absolutely wonderful. And you can have six, definitely for sure, but with those three, you know, it would be just nice for the county to at least, you know, give us, you know, do something, because we are doing something. And so it would be nice to get them like to maybe say, hey, we'll fund one hundred thousand dollars.
That's what we're trying to find out, and, and until such time as, as we make, sit down and have the meeting, I, I think that at this point, you know, we all have a personal feeling toward it. I think at this point, the best thing for me to do is ask the court to poll council.
Aye.
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 Six o'clock, thank you. Mike, can you give me just a second on this, and then get a chance? And it's just more or less a housekeeping issue I have with our agendas. Usually requires two council members to put an agenda on, I think the mayor can put one on, and of course Randy. So I'm reading here in the notes, did Craig call you and request this be put on our agenda?
He and I were speaking, and he, he did basically relay that the board supervisors brought it up, and he mentioned the possibility of a meeting, a joint meeting between the two. So, so I did put it on there, like I say, I wasn't requested by council. I did it more or less at the request of Craig, and the fact that the board brought it up.
To get the ball rolling. Well, the discussion of, what is it, school resource officer, that's all it is. My, my concern is, you know, there's, there's been times, and Ms. Hicks is probably one of the primary principles for this, that requests that you contact Craig, and they, and one of her agenda items gets put on for them to make a decision like we have done here today in public, which we have done for, on behalf of Craig Meadows and the board supervisors. Has that ever happened? Because these come out a lot, where Ms. Hicks is like, Randy, can you reach out to Craig and get the board to... And that never happens, I never get any report back, or if you watch board supervisors meeting, they never discuss anything we have asked that you. So I think, I think it's a two-way street now. I think Craig can now put something on their agenda that we can, we can tune in and see, get them to officially weigh in on, instead of a letter that says no all the way down, and then a backtrack after we withdraw funding. Does it make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Why don't you reach out to Craig and see if he's willing to put an agenda item on there?
Why don't you reach out to Craig and see if he's willing to put an agenda item on there from you, from us? And report back next meeting, I'd like to get that...
What, what, what would you like me to request?
Joanna, you're, you're the one that usually asks that.
I am so glad to hear that, I'm just...
But you get one, you get one.
We didn't know we're fast.
I, I want a meeting with them, so, that's been from the beginning, so.
And I will relay that verbally tomorrow and have Randy back it up with Craig.
So, I mean, it's your second meeting.
No, we're okay, we've already, we've already, we've already passed that.
That was your request, and, and their meeting, their next meeting, they, they have to have this discussion and, and agree to meet with us. I think that's a great one.
Not personally, but between Randy and myself, we'll handle the initial communication. And we will tell, we will suggest to them that council would like to sit down and meet. I will also suggest to them that Mr. Showalter says if they're not all coming, there's no need to be.
That's my personal opinion, I don't want to speak for council. I mean, in case anything, it's all right for you to...
I think if we will show up, their cars, you know? I think it's important that we all show up. I'm sure they will show up.
I appreciate you saying it's coming from me, but I carry no weight down the road here.
Well, I, you know, to me, if council has confidence enough in Randy and myself, I will get the ball rolling and we will make some kind of determination. And to be quite honest with you, we're beginning to look as stupid as a county is in discussing this thing.
Yes, I agree.
So, I think what we need to do is move on.
Sam, it's been an incredible evening.
It's been, it's been different. Town manager.
In regards to the discussion, if you would like to have a moderator, Craig and I did discuss the possibility of a moderator, and I know Kevin Bird does come up a lot because he is certainly very skilled as a moderator. We did feel it might be better to have somebody from outside the area if you're gonna have a moderator in there.
No, no, listen, I mean, we're comfortable with Kevin.
Yeah.
Kevin wins everybody.
Politically though, I mean, he does have a member represented us, he has represented us from, from both, you know, both...
You all know what you want to do, and just let me know what you think.
Well, let's get the meeting started, and then we'll find a moderator.
This is getting ridiculous. All right.
Just maybe a suggestion, the Virginia Institute of Government does moderation like that, and it's a possibility.
Whatever you suggest, we'll vote on.
And just want to mention, the Cambria mural dedication is set for Wednesday, May tenth, at eleven thirty AM.
Eleven thirty?
Yes. We are going to basically close off the street. I, I do have authority to close the street myself as town manager's temporary things, particularly if it's something like this. I, I do that occasionally for our cleaning buildings and painting buildings, things like that, and this is, I guess, similar. It'll be a basically half hour or so for a dedication, so.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Mr. Attorney? Other than this, maybe we're gonna lay on you?
Looking forward to that.
Another staff, Bill? Did you come back from vacation with a cold? If so, I'm not letting you go. Anything, anything for any other staff? Counsel reports, Mr. Showalter?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Bishop?
No report.
Ms. Hicks?
I wanted to say that I found the dates for the cafe, Friendship Cafe. It's on, they meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from nine AM to twelve noon, and they are accepting new clients, so definitely join them, they do a lot of stuff.
This is for seniors?
Yes. And there is a number, five four zero nine eight zero seven seven two zero.
Thank you. Ms. Hockett?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Jenkins?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Sam, you got your letter right there?
Yeah, I'm so confused, I'm technically... Here we go, let's try it. Request for a closed meeting under Code of Virginia two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A three, where discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real properties, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position on negotiation strategy by the public body. Your closest meeting has been held for discussion of disposition of approximately five acres located at Pampasbury Road Northwest and local T. Washington Parkway Northwest, which is currently under construction, and it is formal motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion. Madam Clerk?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
At a six oh, we will reconvene in about five minutes, three to five minutes. At that point, there will be invited staff to this meeting.